Oh, awesome.
Wow.
That's awesome.
No, no question. Congratulations. Come back tomorrow.
Oh, you'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah.
We're waiting on that.
Don't you hate that when they tell you when and then you're just waiting on it?
No, I love it. I love it because I don't have to guess.
Oh, my God.
I love it.
I want to know. I want to know the time and the date.
Yeah.
Oh.
I think it depends on how far in advance they tell you, though, right?
Yeah, I think they told me.
Some don't even tell you. Some don't even tell you. It's like.
Eli Simpson, they were waiting for that. Johns Hopkins and Wash U come back tomorrow.
Ah, all right. Oh, God.
We get started on time. We're a little bit late because our policy meeting ran a little bit over. I'd like to call the Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excuse me. Hey, first up on the agenda is the school community session and public participation. And would you care to?
Good evening. We welcome public comment at our meetings, whether in person or online. We ask that you identify yourself by name and your address. We limit comments to three minutes. It should not be expected during public comment that the board or administration will respond. If necessary, you'll be contacted for follow-up. Do we have any members of the public online? No? Do we have anyone in public who'd like to speak at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Board of Student Representatives report with Eli Ackerman and Brooke Anderson. Thank you.
Yeah, so spring start, spring sports have officially started, which means track for me, Embra. And that started on Saturday. We had our first official practice this Monday. We're finalizing the end of the year dates for a lot of senior events, so the senior class trip, graduations are being planned, the capping down ceremony, all of that stuff. And March 21st at the high school, we're celebrating Down syndrome Awareness Day, so students are invited to wear bright and colorful socks to raise awareness for Down syndrome.
The SAT and NGSS, which is the Next Generation Science Standards Testing, will be taking place tomorrow and next Wednesday for juniors. This is the first time that they're going to combine the test dates, so half of the juniors will be taking the SAT tomorrow, while the other half will be taking the NGSS test. And that means that the rest of the school gets a three-hour delay, which I'm quite jealous of. And then March 27th, the Vibe Show Choir Group has that end-of-the-year fundraiser and will be selling tickets for $10. This is the last performance of the year. And the concert will also showcase the Poulsen, the Poulsen Chorus and the Vibes, so.
I just want to add a clarification to that last point because the poster that went out today did not include the location, so we'll be at the Daniel Hand High School Cafeteria. Auditorium, cafeteria, cafeteria, whatever it is, whatever, capital whatever for calling. And good luck on the SATs.
Thank you.
And good luck in sports. Anybody have any questions for the students? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Eli Ackerman. I wanted to share one of the items that I had was on, there's 400 athletes coming up for the spring. So that's amazingly big, as high school, 750 students, so the majority of our students are participating in a spring sport, so it's, it's, it's great. Keep our students busy. So March, as I shared last meeting, is Board Member Appreciation Month. We are happy to share a small token of the district's appreciation with our, with our board members. Board members spend countless hours each year preparing for meetings, attending board meetings, committee meetings, reading district communications, listening to the public, advocating locally and at the state level for Madison Public Schools. Thank you for all your efforts and support. We know you sacrificed family and personal time to do this important work. We could not run the district without you, so thank you so much. We cannot pay you what you're worth, as you know. But we do like to recognize your, your service with, with what we can from kind of the time, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Should we? The. Apparently, we hope to land before we let the policy pass, so. Just the last general announcement I had was, Neck River School Construction has started. If you drive by the site, you'll see some activity. They're putting fencing around the, around the site and moving, moving dirt around and. You're getting stuff done. They've moved the mailboxes from that side of the street to the other side of the street, so now we have some real signs of the start of construction, so it's really exciting. And then just scheduled today is the groundbreaking, so board members will receive an invite tomorrow for the groundbreaking, which will be April 3rd at 9:30. We're trying to get you there, 9:45.
9:45 will be the official start.
Okay.
And you will all be asked to carpool, please.
Yes. I think we have a limit of about 20 parts for the, for the site, so we, we will look to carpool and/or potentially get a school bus to drive us over. This will be on a, on a smaller ceremony sketch, you know, scale based on the limited parking in this and what we can do at that point. We are looking at ways to involve students later, such as one of the things that they do in construction oftentimes is have students sign the last steel beam that goes up. And so we'd look to do that and involve more of the public when the site is, you know, easier to, to, to walk on and, and beyond. You know, keep everybody safe as we, we can.
So, yeah, I just wanted to add to that. Very excited to receive a text from Becky Ross tonight that Google Maps now lists the school, as I say, so it's official. I'm on the map.
Did it say Neck River?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, yeah. Isn't that cool? I know she was thrilled. She's like.
Yeah, it must be.
It says, yes, it says Neck River School.
Be great. So somebody's looking to move to town, they're going to go on that, and they go to Google Earth and see a lot of like. What happened there? Yeah.
And that was the superintendent's report, other than we also have.
Well, that's the exception. So we're pleased and we appreciate Scott and Catherine's flexibility. We have been trying to get them on the agenda for a while. We've had budget and other things come up. But every two years, in our great partnership with Madison Youth and Family Services, we start off meeting, Mr. Saliteri and I, we meet with Catherine Barton and Scott Ackerman to plan this survey. And then they really take it from there. We appreciate all their, their work. They do a phenomenal job of getting the word out to students and we get incredible participation here in Madison. And then this really, in a lot of ways, directs their work and their grant work, you know, for the next two years in terms of addressing concerns and, you know, looking at positives and community assets. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Scott and Catherine again. Thank you for being here. Some board members may have seen this before. We recognize that. And so you probably see a little shorter version than you might have seen elsewhere and then have an opportunity for questions.
Both seem really hopeful to hear the clip.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming in.
Our pleasure. So, good evening, everybody. As Dr. Cook said, my name is Scott Ackerman. I'm the Director of Madison for Family Services. To my left is our Assistant Director for the Community Support under Youth and Family Services. And Catherine, under her position, she oversees all of our drug and alcohol coalition work, as well as oversees the social service function of our office. So there's a number of things that she does that are involved with directly to the community. So I will walk you through our, or at least begin to walk through our data presentation. So I'm just going to move us ahead, yes? So, all right. So this is, so let me just start with, with Youth and Family Services. We are the, the official youth service bureau for the town of Madison, so we're defined under Connecticut State Statute as the youth service bureau, and that's just important to understand. So statutorily, we are required to essentially evaluate the needs as they relate to youth and families within the, within the town. It's every YSB that falls under the statute. There's 102 such YSBs in the state of Connecticut that are part of the Connecticut Youth Services Association. Now, youth service bureaus are not necessarily responsible to address or solve all the problems or the issues that come up in their evaluations. They are responsible to know what they are and then to be providing programs and services to address those needs and working with community stakeholders, collaborating around what those needs are. And youth service bureaus can be of various sizes across the state. They really are based on how their community views them, how their community funds them and supports them to do their work. For our Youth and Family Services, we provide a piece of positive development prevention. So we have a number of staff that are very specific to those duties. We have an outpatient mental health clinic, which provides services to youth and families in town. And as I mentioned before, we have a social services component that focuses for all of adults in town and our Children's Alcohol Coalition. So we, within our about 12 FTE departments, we cover a lot of ground. Our prevention programs that are very much integrated with the school system, we have programming now that reaches pretty much every student that's enrolled in the public school system. So mindfulness that goes on at the elementary level, as well as various peer program, peer support programs, advocacy programs that operate all the way through middle school and the high school. Just important for you all to know, and we recently did a presentation in front of the day on faculty, and we did get some feedback afterwards around newer staff that weren't as familiar with us. So it's important for us to kind of always remind people who and what we are, and if there's any public who watches this, I want to make sure that they understand what we are. Okay, so the survey, as Dr. Cook mentioned, goes back over the summer. We start talking and putting together input towards what our surveys will look like in the fall. We start with our base survey, which is the 160-question search institute. That's the one that we've done consistently over time. That gives us really good data points to compare. And that particular survey also utilizes the developmental asset model, so not only are we asking questions about where there might be issues or concerns, like substance abuse and mental health issues, but we're also asking for and measuring for the presence of developmental assets. So it's not just looking at where our problems are, it's also looking at where our strengths are and getting the youth to really weigh in, or at least our high school youth to really weigh in on what base is going on. We, because 160 questions is not enough, we add an addendum of about 19 questions. Those questions are ones that we feel, whether or not are missed. And Catherine will explain a little bit more, like we have some mental health questions that are not as well covered in the search institute that we want to, we want to explore more deeply in the, in the survey itself. Any questions that I could?
Definitely.
Right? Oh, I love this slide. So one of the biggest challenges we have with high school students is their, their willingness to engage in such a long survey. But when we moved it to an electronic survey, there were also concerns about the safety of the, of their interaction with the survey. And so they essentially told us over the first couple of times that we did this electronically, that they were worried about being, having their surveys traced back directly to them. So we, I won't play the video. Our way of handling this was to, rather than to put it, expect like teachers and advisory classes when they took the survey to read a statement or expect them to describe the survey in any kind of detail, we didn't think that that was fair or realistic. So we created a video in which we explained what the survey is, explained how we keep their data safe, really emphasized the point that we don't really want to know. We have no desire to actually even consider looking and that it is essentially a theoretical impossibility for us to trace back any survey to them. So I have a piece, it's about a four-minute preview video. I, I have a section, Catherine has a section, and we have two great student reps on to our board, so we have two students who join us. And each of us basically explain what the survey is, why it's important, and how we keep their data safe. And this is the best that we can do to help them feel better about it.
Well, true.
Yeah, that's enough. Okay. Favorite part of the survey is after the survey. It's really the rollout. It's the conversations that come in, in, in different forums and in different meetings. We've done presentations now. How many altogether was it?
Nine.
Nine presentations. One large one to the community that included a student panel, one that we did with the, the student, student leadership class at the high school. And wherever we can, we're sharing the data. We want to get people's reactions to it. You know, it's not just about what the number is, it's what the number means to people and what we're learning means to people. And we take this information. It does absolutely affect how we think about our programming, what we plan for. But this year, which has really been cool, it's made its way into advisory lessons. And we've worked with two of the teachers and the administration at the high school to help move some of the data points into smaller group discussions at the high school. As you can imagine, if we tried to do this kind of a presentation and show just the survey results, it, it's really not a very effective way to engage high school students, especially on stuff like, it's just data. And there's some things when we've talked to certain high school students where, like if we're expressing, you know, which class maybe represents a number in terms of substance abuse, sometimes they have a, a way of taking that, not the way that we would like it to, like they would share. So rather than that, we, with, and really this has gone back to the high school, they're taking the data and moving it towards more intimate discussions among students, which we really appreciate value. And you ready?
Ready. So for, at a glance, basically, our substance use for the most part stayed about the same. Vaping and prescription drugs only went up about one percentage point. Cannabis stayed the same as it was two years ago. The one big thing that we saw an increase in was drinking, so the alcohol use went from 25% to 31%. Now, I will say in 2021, we hit an all-time low in all substances because we were still kind of pandemicking at that point. So something that we saw at the national level, at the state level, everybody's rates plummeted because people were less social, they weren't going out as much. So we weren't surprised to see an increase, but I think the biggest surprise for us was alcohol was the big increase and everything else stayed low. But I'm going to get into a little bit more detail about one of those interesting factors in a minute. The developmental assets went down slightly from 2021. I, it kind of reinforces the fact that substance use went up slightly, that now the assets went down slightly. We'll get into more detail about what those assets are and what that looks like. There has been improvement in youth mental health. That includes depression, anxiety, and suicide attempts. And we've also seen an improvement in the number of students who responded that they've been victims of sexual assault and sexual harassment, which we're really happy about. We started asking about that two years ago because it was something that kind of popped up on our radar. We're like, we'd love to have more data about that. And I can't tell you how lucky we are that, that is in public schools. We're like, yeah, go for it. The fact that Dr. Cook and Mr. Saliteri were like, yeah, we could ask those questions was amazing. Considering some towns are still pushing back on doing surveys in general. And I think the biggest message that we take from the survey is the majority of our kids are making really good, healthy decisions. When you look at the trends and when you look at the things that jump out as alarming, they are, but at the end of the day, a majority of our students are making really good, smart, healthy decisions. And that's something that we have to continue to remind ourselves. So one of the biggest things that popped out, especially around the drinking this year, was this is the first time that we've been doing the survey that we've seen the sophomore class outuse the juniors for alcohol and tobacco, and they were completely even for cannabis. Typically, what we see is freshmen are the lowest, then sophomore year goes up a little bit. And then there's kind of a big jump between sophomore and junior year, and then there's another increase for senior year. But this was the first time ever that we've seen the sophomore class outusing the juniors, which was a surprise. Also something to be concerned about because they're only sophomores and we have them for two more years, so definitely something we want to continue to work with the schools to address with that population. And one of the big questions, I don't know if you guys had this question, but my first question was, are juniors drinking less or are sophomores drinking more? And the answer was yes. So our junior classes continued to go down over time. You'll see pretty much everybody hit their all-time low two years ago during the pandemic, except for the junior class. They continued to go down. But that sophomore class shot up drastically. So two years ago, 10th graders, only 16% of 10th graders were drinking in the last 30 days. That went up to 36% this year, so it's definitely a concern. It's something to look at. Something to keep our eye on, something to continue to educate those students. And the other interesting thing is if you look at this graph, that bottom line, the freshman in 2021, that 10%, those are now our 27% of juniors that responded that they were drinking in the last 30 days. So it's interesting, an all-time low for freshmen. Two years later, it was an all-time low for juniors. That 16% of sophomores, though, are now that 45% of seniors. So it's interesting to see how those two grades kind of moved forward in the, in the last two years. This was the first year that we decided to ask for how students that were using cannabis in the last 30 days ingested cannabis, because we know that there is now this huge push to go towards vaping and edibles. We're seeing less and less of the dried plant. So we allowed our students to select however many they were using. 79% of our students who responded that they had used cannabis in the last 30 days vaped it. So that wasn't a surprise, but it's a challenge because we know it's easier to hide, easier to conceal, easier to take with you. 46% were using edibles, 57 smoking. My guess is in time, edibles and smoking are going to shift, and we're going to see more and more edibles because especially on social media apps and things that are being pushed towards underage consumers, we know that it's the edible and the vaping market. So why are, why is it a concern about vaping? For the cannabis concentrates, they're definitely a more potent form of taking in THC, which is that part of marijuana that makes you high. So when you think about the dried plants, even the top tier dried plants at this point are around 20%, which is, if you think back to 1999, which I know is 25 years ago, because it feels like 25 years ago, not really. That was still under 5%. So the same to the fact that we've gone in 25 years from 5% to 20% for dried plant, it's crazy. The potency has really dramatically shifted. And I know there's a huge message for people saying, if you used marijuana in the 90s and you're now raising a child in 2024, they're consuming something way different than you consumed. So if you're thinking back and comparing it to what was popular when you were in high school, that's not what we're dealing with anymore. So the concentrates are really 40 to 80%, and sometimes the crystallized forms could be up to 99% pure THC. And the way that they're extracting it is they're using things like butane to extract the THC from the leaf. So at this point, you're not even, you know, the huge push for legalizing marijuana at one point was it's natural, it comes from the ground, it's a plant. But the things that people are consuming, especially vaping, is so far from its natural form and it's being heated up, so now there's heavy metals involved. It's becoming aerosol, it's going directly into your lungs, and the solution is made of butane and other products. We don't know what the long-term effects of that are going to be, unfortunately. So we have to be concerned about lung health. We have to be concerned about the psychological effects because, again, the THC is so potent that now we have to worry about psychosis. We have to worry about the increased anxiety and the panic attacks, which unfortunately, a lot of people tend to gravitate towards marijuana to help with anxiety and depression. But we're seeing with the high potency products, it swings the other way. Hallucinations, and of course, the other physical effects like your heart rate, your blood pressure. We're seeing a lot of digestive issues in terms of people not being able to hold food down. So again, it's going to be, take time to figure out what these long-term effects are, but it's definitely a concern to have this generation almost being guinea pigs to see what's going to happen and what's going to happen to the long-term health. One of the other big things that stood out for us this year was drinking and driving. So 7% of our students reported they've driven after drinking once or more in the last 12 months. That's up from 4% in 2021. When you look at just the senior class, because we know they're driving more than the other classes are based on their age, 18% of our 12th graders reported that they had driven after drinking once or more in the last 12 months. And that was up from 9% in 2021. We went back pre, even before 2021 to see if it was kind of a blip because, again, the drinking rates plummeted in 2021, but in 2019, it was still 9%. So we know that we've seen an increase there. And 23% of our students reported that they have ridden in a car with a driver who'd been drinking at least once in the last 12 months. Now, that could be another student. It could be a parent. It could be a family member, a friend. We don't know who it is, but we know that 23% of our students are getting in the car with somebody who had been drinking. This also doesn't cover any other impaired driving. This is just drinking and driving. This was covered in the survey. And now, and it's like, hmm, do we have another, are we going to bump it up to 21, 22 questions in two years? Because we have other questions to ask. You know, we, we don't know about distracted driving, driving after cannabis use, driving after prescription pill use. There's so many things to cover and it's really hard to scale it back to try and get everything. For depression and anxiety, as Scott mentioned, we added this one into our addendum because in the search institute survey, they do ask how often you've been, felt sad or really down in a certain amount of time, but we felt like we wanted more concrete data. So we started using the PHQ4, which is a screening tool that physicians use for anxiety and depression. We did go in the right directions. Now about 20, now 25% of our students reported that they have moderate or severe anxiety or depression. It's down from 28% two years ago. I will say our non-binary gender fluid and students who identify in the LGBTQIA+ categories are more likely to report moderate to severe anxiety and depression based on their population. So we see that boys are lowest and then girls that are non-binary and gender fluid students. And then the same, our straight students are a lot lower than those who identify as being lesbian, gay, or, or bi. For attempted suicide, again, we went in the right direction here. So we're, 10% of our students have reported that they have attempted suicide at least once in their lifetime. So when you compare that to the national rate, it is 9%, but that's only in the last 12 months. This is across our students' entire lifetime. So it could have been seventh grade.
I just had a question about this one because you have it listed male and female, but what about the students that don't identify?
So because this question is part of the search institute survey, the search institute survey doesn't break down by gender, anything other than male and female. So if a student were to respond that they were transgender, male to female, they would fall into the female category. Then unfortunately, we don't get to capture our non-binary and gender fluid students.
I just didn't know if the data was getting kicked out or if it was being.
No, it's the limitation of, I love the search institute survey, but I absolutely love our addendum because I can track the data and so, and cross-run it in so many different ways. And we don't have that ability with all of the 160 questions. I wish we did.
So do you, do, do you think based on that, that the number would be higher?
My guess is if we had to break it down by gender for total population, non-binary, gender fluid students might. Total population, non-binary, gender fluid students might track higher. But it's also a much smaller population. So when you think about males and females, you could almost split the school in half between. The, the percentage of males and females that we have, for our non-binary population, it's a pool of only twenty kids. So it really does dramatically skew the data at the same time, uh because when, when you think about twenty kids. And if five of them respond, then it's a really big percentage of. Uh, that population as opposed to like two hundred and seventy five girls or, you know. Uh, so it's really interesting, depending on the data point, sometimes we put in the numbers and sometimes we put in the percentages. Because it's such a small pool that it really does skew the data. Uh, but if I had to guess, it would be higher for our, our non-binary gender.
I just wanna make, make sure this is actually attempted suicide, not seriously considered suicide.
Yeah, not, not considered, but have attempted suicide at least once.
Yes. Yeah. I, I know it's going in the right direction, but those numbers are unacceptable and. I'm very glad that we have an administration partnership with youth and family services. And a board that are all working in the direction of addressing these things and the anxiety and depression epidemic. Um. Uh, special thanks to all of you for, you know, for pitching in on that.
Absolutely. The fact that we're able to go into the schools and do QPR training, which is a suicide prevention training. Uh, is an incredible partnership that other schools are so jealous that we, that we're able to do that. Uh, when I meet with other communities and they say that. A couple of years ago, we trained our entire high school in QPR suicide prevention. And now it's ingrained in freshmen and seventh grade curriculum that they're blown away. Uh, so we're really, really lucky to have the school district in the, the partnership that we do.
And we involve students in that. So we have staff that are responsible for the training itself, that they bring. Uh, the high school students into classes to have pieces of those presentations. So it's a, we hope, a very effective way of doing that suicide prevention piece.
Um, as I mentioned, we included sexual assault and sexual harassment questions. Uh, we started doing that two years ago. We did try and in the right direction, so that's. Uh, for sexual assault, it's decreased from sixteen percent to thirteen percent. Still a lot of work to do, uh but at least we're going in the right direction. And for students that responded that they've uh ever experienced sexual harassment, that decreased from thirty four percent to twenty nine point five percent. Going in the right direction, still a lot of work to do. Um, and I will say by number, female students are most likely to respond that they've been affected with sexual assault. But, but based on percentage of the population, our non-binary and gender fluid students are much more likely to have experience. Based on the size of their population.
I guess with regard to the middle one, the, a middle bullet. Students responding that they've experienced sexual harassment.
Yeah.
Um, once or more. Do you know what the national averages are for high school students?
Unfortunately, we cannot find a data point that we could easily compare ourselves to. Uh, because again, we're really lucky to be able to ask the question. But we haven't found that they're really tracking that question, especially the way that we worded it. And we were really intentional with the way that we worded sexual assault and sexual harassment to use the language that they use in the health classes. So it's language that they're comfortable with. But on the flip side, when we try to look for state or national data, it compares it, a lot of times it boils down to intimate partner. Um, and being harassed by an intimate partner or being assaulted by an intimate partner. Uh, so it's really hard and it's so different that we really can't compare the data. I wish we could. We keep looking.
Well, I'm just glad to see that it's decreasing because I know that they do work on that.
Yeah. And we keep, it's funny because every time we get survey data back, I go back to search for anything that we can compare ourselves to. Come on, people, start asking the, the tough questions. Uh, the last big area of concern was eating disorders. So twenty percent of our students surveyed. Report, have reported that they've engaged in anorexic or bulimic behavior. Um, for males, it was eleven percent, twenty, twenty nine percent of females. So. Uh, we're starting to approach almost a third of our female population has engaged in anorexic or bulimic behavior. Um, unfortunately, the girls are not going in the right direction. Um, it really spiked up during the pandemic and unfortunately it's still climbing. Um. Something that we're aware of, something that we've tried to address. Uh, I know Melissa Bollino's girls group has been concerned about this. Um, you know, they've tried to encourage, you know, positive messages in the bathroom, mirrors and all kinds of other things, but. Uh, something that we hope starts to go down. Um, but we're also battling social media and a bunch of other outside influences that are really hard to control, so. Continuing to um really work on the self-esteem and the eating disorder behavior.
Uh, just, I wanna mention just briefly, so just can you go back one, one point? Um, one thing that's trending for males and it's, um, so if I interview, I've heard the term anorexia. So that there's a sort of a newer trend where among males, it's the same kind of restrictive eating. Um, but that the, the, the obsession comes with how your body looks. So that you're, you're overtraining and, and over um. Uh, overdoing in terms of just that, how you look and how big you are and how your muscles appear. So it's gaining a little bit more and more attention and research. But it basically looks like anorexia, only it's the, the obsession is really around the uh, the male being. Bigger and more, you know, more like uh your, your Batman and, and other Marvel muscle bound people.
So are they dehydrating? Is that?
Yeah, so like they're over, uh, they're just basically overdoing everything in terms of their training. Uh, and the same kind of issue that you have where there's a um sort of a, a disconnect with, with um. With how they really look versus how they feel.
What kind of things are we doing to address that? He said the bathroom mirrors, but I feel like we need to do a lot more, right?
Oh, yeah, so um we've tried to do, so we've done education through uh like the stall talks in the bathrooms. We've done the um. Girls groups at the high school and at the middle school to try and address it, at least within those smaller populations to branch out into affect change. Um, we've done the messages in the bathrooms. I know Melissa's done other things with the. Um, especially with the mentorship across the high school and the middle school.
And it's a part of the girl talk that they do in the health classes. We're, we're probably being outpaced by everything that happens on social media. Like that's, you know, like what we're doing, you have to kind of think of it this way. So many of these trends are being driven by, by social forces. So what we're doing is often not. Not ever gonna come close to what they're, what they're consuming in other places. Um, but we are doing what we can in the schools. The school is very invested in, in doing this. It's uh our program, of course, but it's how teachers, I think, people in general are paying attention to this.
Uh, so for the forty developmental assets, we know forty nine percent of our students reported they had twenty one to forty assets. We need to build that up. Um, eight percent of our students reported they had zero to ten, but also eight percent of our students had thirty one to forty. Uh, so we need to continue to build those numbers. The more students we can get to the uh even twenty one to forty category, the better. Uh, the forty developmental assets are forty fundamental building blocks, uh that the search institute has identified. The, the more the students have, the less likely they are to engage in risky behavior. Substance abuse and the more likely they are to be engaged in education, be resilient and move forward with making healthy decisions. So in terms of how each assets uh scored, each asset's carefully evaluated. Uh, and considered either present or absent, depending on how students answer questions. And it's usually a series of questions. There are very few assets that only one question goes into it. One of them's reading for pleasure and you're just asking me how often I read for pleasure. Uh, but other ones are more complex. Um, and then they're either a scale of number of hours spent or. Uh, a scale from strongly agree to strongly disagree with, I don't know, in the middle. And depending on how students answer the series of questions, it determines on whether somebody has that asset. So. Uh, to use safety for an example, uh if I were to say that I. I agree that I never worry about being hurt by somebody in my home. I agree that I never worry about being hurt by somebody in my school. But I disagree that I never worry about walking around my neighborhood by myself. Then it's going to say that I don't have that asset because I disagreed on one of the questions. Uh, so it's kind of how they're scored, just to give you an example. Uh, we know that assets are. They're not black and white and usually some students have um some form of that asset. Uh, but just for simplicity, because it's a survey, they had to figure out how to boil it down. So in terms of the forty developmental assets, the good news is I'm not gonna pull up all forty and make you guys memorize it because it's a big list. But I'll break it down this way. So there's internal assets and those are the things that young people need to develop within themselves. And there are external assets and those are the, the supports they need to receive from their friends, family, school and their community. So the internal assets are commitment to learning, positive values, social competencies and positive identity. So we know we want them, you know, to wanna make a change in the world. We want them to be committed to school. We want them to feel good about themselves. Uh, we want them to make a difference. When you think about the external assets, that's where we kind of step in and we get to help provide support to these young people. So that's providing support, making sure that they feel empowered. Making sure that they feel like they have boundaries and they have clear expectations for what we expect. And making sure that they have avenues for constructive use of their free time. So assets are important because we know that the more assets a student has, less likely they are to engage in risky behavior. And less, less likely they are to use substances. So if you look at this chart, if we were to get all of our students to that thirty one to forty range. They'd be making really smart decisions and we would completely eliminate tobacco use, marijuana use and prescription drugs, which is pretty amazing. Um, so that's why we continue to work on the numbers and try to build up our young people so that we know, so that they feel supported, they feel engaged. They don't wanna leave anybody disappointed by any decisions that they're making and they don't wanna disappoint themselves. So for our challenges, um, I, I will say our challenges don't change much year to year. Uh, re- restraint has always been kind of low, um, but it's really interesting. So that one boils down to two questions. And it's just basically agreeing or disagreeing that they think. That they either agree or disagree with the fact that they should or should not be sexually active or using. Um, alcohol or other drugs at any point in their teenage years. Uh, so it's really interesting because that one, when you compare it to the number of students who are actually sexually active or actually using drugs or alcohol. They don't, it doesn't match up. So they might feel a certain way, but doesn't mean that they're engaging in the behavior. Uh, we know that parent involvement in schooling is usually pretty low. Uh, these are high school students, so it's not a surprise. Uh, the questions that go into that are my parents ask about my homework. My parents attend school events or activities. Uh, my parents ask about what I'm learning in school. And here's the one that would put my kid off of the, I have that asset was, but my parents helped me with my homework. And I'm not gonna help my fifteen year old with trigonometry because they would have a worse grade than they do right now. Um, so that one's a little bit trickier and also I'm at the point where I wanna get my. Out of the habit of getting my help for homework because they're gonna go off to college and I'm not gonna be there to help them with their homework. Uh, so that one, I think for high schools, traditionally low for other communities as well because. They're starting to learn more independence and, and taking control of, of doing their homework without. Uh, parents necessarily sitting down and helping them do their homework because it's really challenging and we haven't had to do trigonometry for a really long time. Uh, community values youth, also an interesting question because it boils down to. People in the community really value me, wanna hear my voice, stuff like that. And even for adults, I'm not sure how many of us would say, I absolutely agree that people. Know who I am, know what I have to say and really care about what I have to say. So I think that's a really challenging one for anybody to feel like. The community values you as an individual. Um, creative activities, our kids are really, really involved in a lot of clubs, sports and activities. But when it comes to spending three or more hours in lessons or practicing music, theater of the arts, they're less likely to be doing that. And reading for pleasure is always our lowest. If they go up a little bit this year, which is good. I think if we were to ask this question in the summertime, it would look a little bit different. We have to remember we're asking this like on October twenty fifth. Uh, so it's pretty early into the school year. And they're getting a lot of homework and less likely to be reading for pleasure at that point and more likely to be focusing on doing their homework and, and other things and. All the clubs and activities that they do.
That's what we say to make ourselves feel.
Uh, for gender specific trends, uh just in terms of a couple of concerns. Uh, self-esteem and safety are two where we see a really big gender gap. Uh, both of the assets have come down over time. Uh, I compared it to the, the highest point that we've seen it. So in self-esteem, it was two thousand and eleven. So since then, it's dropped from fifty seven percent to forty one percent. Uh, but the gap between the males and females is fifty four, four percent of males say that they have a high self-esteem versus twenty eight percent of females. For safety, the highest we saw was in twenty fifteen. We were at seventy six percent then, now we're at sixty percent. Uh, but the gender gap there is between seventy four percent of males say that they feel safe versus forty eight percent of females. And again, when you look at those individual questions that go into it, the biggest gender gap we have there is feeling safe walking around your neighborhood. Um, and it's really interesting because, you know, when I talk to girls about that. They talk about how my parents always tell me I need to be careful. My parents always tell me like, you know, keep your keys and we don't do that with boys. When boys go out for a walk, we say, have a good walk, have a good run, have a good jog. But when girls are going out for a run or a jog, it's, do you have your keys? Do you have this? You, make sure you have your cell phone with you. So it's really interesting because if I compare that question to. Uh, even my husband and I've talked about like, oh, you know, we wanna make sure that, you know, the lights are on and this is. And he doesn't think about those things necessarily, but it's been so ingrained in me as a female to always be aware of who's around. Always make sure your keys are readily available, uh always make sure you have your phone to call somebody if you need help. And it's really interesting how as a society in general, we treat males and females different in terms of how safe they feel, especially being alone. Uh, when you don't have a male with you to keep you safe. Um, so this is, unfortunately, that one hasn't shifted much. I always like to end with positive things. So the things that we're doing really, really well and these are, we're doing really, really well. School engagement is our top asset. Uh, youth programs. So again, not those creative ac, not the creative activities unfortunately, but. Young people spending three or more hours a week in sports, clubs, organizations at school. Have you guys been to the high school? After the high school was out, people don't go home. They are still there and it is still busy. Uh, they're achievement motivated. They have wonderful family support where they feel like they're loved and they're cared for. They have positive peer influence and they feel like they have a sense of integrity. Those are all incredible, incredible things. Their kids are feeling the support and they're building those things within themselves. To move forward and to have, you know, a great successful life. So the big thing with building assets is we need to go from young people's problems to thinking about young people's strengths and what they're doing really well. Building on those assets that we know we have. We need to go from, this is work that professionals do to, this is everybody's work. We need to go from young people are using resources to young people are resources. We need to go from focusing on just individual programs to thinking about the relationships that we're building in those programs. And making sure that our kids feel supported, valued and they're making connections. We need to go from, we're already building assets because we are, to we need to continue to build assets intentionally. And make sure that we're making those intentional connections. No, the wrong way, didn't I know? Okay. We're good. And uh last, just thinking about your assets. So, um, I think we could all think back to when we were. High school age and think about the people that really made a difference and a positive impact on your lives. And thinking about how they made you feel, what they did to make you feel that way, how they made those connections to make you felt. To make you feel like you were cared for or they engaged with you. Uh, remembering that assets are again, an approach, not a program. Everybody can build them. Everybody here is an asset to our young people. You guys are all spending your time volunteering. Uh, to make the lives of our school kids better and to really help shape that. Um, assets focus on the strengths of young people and building those fundamental relationships. We all know that when we're surrounded by people that we think care about us and we wanna spend time with, we flourish. Uh, people like walking into an office building, they don't like any of their coworkers, but if they like all their coworkers, they like the work they're doing. Suddenly work doesn't see, feel so bad. So it's kind of the same as assets. You wanna make sure that they feel cared for, listened to. Uh, and then they suddenly wanna be there. Uh, they wanna do their best. Um, it doesn't take a lot of time to build assets. Sometimes it's as simple as walking into Starbucks and getting your coffee and saying hi to the teenagers that are waiting for their coffee. Um, it's just those little intentional actions that really help build uh assets and support young people. Um, and as we know, it reduces uh risky behavior, but it also helps school performance. And it helps set them up. And it helps set them up for success. I try to keep it really short, because there's a lot of information, I assume you have already seen it. Uh, but I will say the full survey and previous surveys are up on our website. Uh, as well as the state of the youth, uh, presentation, which was the full, um, PowerPoint. Uh, with the panel of our young people that were also present.
So it could've been longer.
Good question. So we have this survey and we do it every year. Now, what do we do with it? So we have it, you know it.
So we do it every two years.
No, no, but what do we do with that information?
And that's, that, that is a, that's a great question, because I think, um, discussing it, acknowledging that we've got these strengths and we've got these challenges. I think there's a piece of this, as we try to present it out into the community, it's to educate the community so people know what's going on here. And we hope as many people engage in that as possible. This for us affects our programming, the kind of things that we talk about in our groups. And having, you know, like Gail here and Dr. Cook here, like they take these things and they make sure that they, they get uh, turned into, they affect lesson plans and other things, I don't wanna speak to you guys, it's not my playing. Uh, but I know that that's what they do. Um, we may at times look at like campaigns and things that we can do that are based on the survey, uh, so that's, that's what we'll do.
Oh, so to speak to some of the more like, um, pointed things that we've done, uh, the reason that we did the QPR trainings in all the classrooms is because of the suicide and depression and anxiety data that we received. So it directly goes to impacting, uh, what programs we implement. Um, I also co-run, um, a group called Roots with Justin from our office. And every single thing we do in that group is directed by the school survey and what the needs are, based on, uh, what's popped up, so uh, we've done things to engage the community, we've done things to, uh, engage other students, right now we're working on creating a PSA. Uh, and a bunch of other materials that will not only go through the high school, but go through the middle school as well. Uh, one of the big things that we're working on is something that the middle school, um, teachers will be able to show, uh, in choices and other avenues about, uh, breaking up the myth that everybody in the high school drinks and does drugs. Uh, and really focusing on the positive aspects, so they go about it saying, we have reasons not to do these things. We, not everybody is doing these things, and it's our expectation as you come up to Daniel Hand that you will not be doing these things either.
Do you do that in a large group, like an assembly?
That'll be the whole eighth grade.
The choi- so Choices, the Choices program, we have two of our staff that bring, um, a group of high schoolers, uh, that are mostly parent advocates. And they come and they address kids in their eighth grade health classes, so it's called Choices, and they, it's basically the students.
So you reach all the kids.
Yes.
Uh, we've also used it to create, uh, assembly programs, so we'll have an assembly for the junior class before prom, the senior class before prom. And they're also gonna do a high school assembly based on the drunk driving stats, because once they saw that, they went in and immediately booked that as well. So depending on what kind of bubbles up as a concern is how we shift and pivot and break information into the schools and community.
Can I also add, as a board and a district, um, we've done a lot of stuff directly that absolutely impacts what we learned about tonight, and we've done it thoughtfully and we've done it purposefully. One of the things we do, for example, is, um, the way we partner with Madison Youth and Family Services, we have two uh, Youth and Family Services employees in our schools as counselors at Paulson and, and the high school as permanent additions that are funded through Madison Youth and Family Services.
No, those are funded. Yeah, through the town.
Yeah.
That's a big difference, that.
Well, Madison Youth and Family Services is an arm of the town.
I, right.
It's a department of the town. So yes, it's absolutely funded by the town.
I wish that the board would fund Madison.
Well, we have, and that's the other thing that I was gonna say, is we've also added social workers and other, um, mental health supports in our budget. We've done it actively, thoughtfully, over the last few years, the S R funds coming off, and we've added um, two social workers that we have to carry on our budget now, who voted to do that. And I, again, I congratulate and thank all of you for, for being on board for that. We, um, over the past couple of years, we've retooled, um, with Gail's help and our curriculum writers, we've retooled all of our curricula to include social emotional learning. Um, and, um, we also, uh, you know, thanks to Craig and his work with the building administrators, we've incorporated social emotional learning and mental health supports into our, um, school. Um, really well developed plans, let's get that wrong. So we've done a lot and, and we've been way more proactive than a lot of boards that I've talked to, um, at CADE, and, uh, you know, it we, we have to get those numbers down even more. There's an absolute epidemic of anxiety, depression, eating disorders, and, um, you know, we, we are doing the right stuff, and it's starting to show positive traction and by these, some of these numbers coming down, but we have to keep doing it, we have to keep on it.
So I, I, I would like to say thank you, I think that you have done a phenomenal job. I think your work is noticed by many, I think that Erin Parbit at the high school is a phenomenal asset. I think there, people are waiting outside her door, she is empathetic, she is understanding, she is sweet, she is caring, I can't say enough about her, um, and your program. I think some of the numbers concern me, one is the alcohol, the drinking and the driving. And every time you turn the TV on, you hear about it, and you hear about wrong way drivers and alcohol. And I'm wondering, only because I sat on a different board event in a different town, and every three or four years, they would do a dare program. And they would have a mock drunk driving kind of thing outside right before prom. So you would have a mock car crash with, and not suggesting this, I'm just thinking it out, out loud. And, um, the ambulance would be there, police would be there, unfortunately, a funeral parlor would be there. And they would mock out a complete drunk driving accident. And I can tell you, I've been to it, I've seen it, it is so powerful. And those kids just, everyone's speechless at the end of it, and I'm just wondering, is that something that we've ever thought of doing here?
It's something that we've done, I can't say we've done it here in Madison, uh, not in the time that I've been here, but I've been involved with other communities that have done it. Um, and one of the reasons that we kind of.
What was your reaction to it?
One of the reasons that we kinda got away from doing that is it wasn't an evidence-based strategy, uh, because it looks amazing and it gets a lot of attention. But unfortunately, the way that kids' brains are wired, it only stays in their brain for, at maximum forty-eight hours. It's gone. Uh, so one thing that they were seeing, um, statistically is kids might be impacted for twenty-four to forty-eight hours if it was right before prom. Then suddenly the thoughts of prom creep back in, and they're like, okay, it's go time. Uh, so they started getting away from it. What we do is we do, uh, pre-prom assembly for both juniors and seniors. But we also reinforce it with messaging before and after, um, we talk about, um, hitting even social media. Uh, so one thing that our students have worked on, uh, this year is creating social media posts that will go out through the schools. Uh, through, uh, hopefully, we're get, we're working on getting, uh, Chris Farrell to put it out through the athletic sites. And to have our students strategically put it out through Instagram, um, channels that they know kids, other kids are watching and sharing. Uh, because they don't want it to be like, oh, here are the schools coming to tell us this, or here's MYFS coming to tell us this, but to have it more of a homegrown, this is our message. Um, so it's, it's a matter of just not doing these things in isolation too, but following it up with other messages, messages to parents. Um, which I know is one thing that we're really lucky to have the schools to be able to spread those messages out, but it, um, as long as it's not done, it's just like a quick assembly or a quick boom, here's a mock car crash. It can be effective, but it has to be part of a more comprehensive.
I'm surprised to hear that, that it, it doesn't retain.
Yeah.
Longer, because it, I, it's been nine years and I still remember it, like.
Yeah, it's really interesting, because, uh, so my background is I got involved with prevention when I was only thirteen. Um, and I was part of my local prevention council, uh, and then I was really involved with MAD at the state level, I was one of the board members. And I was, it was really interesting, so I was a board member right around the time that they're like, oh, this is an evidence, evidence-based, everything pivoted to environmental strategies. So it was really interesting to be a part of that, but I still, I still remember the mock car crash that I had at my high school.
Yeah.
Um, but it was really interesting, because I was already, prevention was already ingrained in my brain, so it's, it's stuck in there, so.
Yeah.
Um, not.
On the child.
Yeah, so it's not impactful for general population longer.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. So I remember when I was in high school, a long time ago, they, uh, the town got a car that was wrecked from drunk driving, and where the driver had to be extricated with the jaws of life. And they parked it at the high school, next to the school, and it stayed there from prom through graduation as a visual reminder. Would that make any type of different impact, because it's like, or do they eventually just not see it anymore?
It, they start to be sensitized to it, um, and the other thing that we battle is adolescents tend to have, have a that won't happen to me mentality. Uh, so there, we have very empathetic, amazing youths that will sit and listen to a victim talk about how they lost their child and be devastated and call their mom and cry and say, I love you. Um, but at the same time, not necessarily have it resonate that, oh, that could happen to me. Um, so I think it's, it's tough, because we have to reinforce those messages, but we also have to create a system in place so that those things aren't happening.
You, you still didn't say drive, uh, rides?
No, we, so we had to, uh, stop during the pandemic and.
And I wondered if it started.
Yeah, yeah.
That was such a great.
I know, I was a fan of it too, but it wasn't really a hard program to keep running, and it had a lot of, um, a lot of insurance liability things that would. Yeah, but, but I mean, we also now have things like Uber and other things that kids are much more comfortable with, and are safe alternatives, so like our people now, we just need to educate teenagers on that and make sure.
Well, I appreciate it, I don't have to be so.
Thanks, I just have to thank you so much, um, super information, I really appreciate everything you do, I have two quick questions. What were the response rates like?
Uh, so we had I think I don't remember, a hundred and twenty people either not take the survey or have them thrown out based on the way they were answering, out of the eight hu- just under eight hundred.
Okay. Um, and then do you always do the survey at the same time of year?
Yes. We always do it, it'll fall right around the same week, uh, because we realized that if we switched to the springtime, certainly, we would have really skewed data. Um, but it's really, we're really lucky in the fact that Guilford and Clinton also do the same search and suit survey the same time of year, every, uh, two years, just like we do, so we're all on the same schedule, which is so nice.
Man, I have a question about the alcohol use, um, increase in past three days, did you see rates of like brand disapproval go down over that time period, perception of harm too?
Yeah, so it was interesting, because, um, for alcohol, brand disapproval, peer disapproval, and perception of harm all went down slightly for alcohol.
Yeah.
They all went up, up slightly for cannabis.
Yeah.
So, um, that was really interesting, that we kinda stayed the line on, uh, cannabis use, and that was the one substance that all those three went up, all those three indicators.
Okay, interesting.
The demographic that had lower substance abuse rates were our LGBTQ plus kids, which we found, you know, when you look at like, when we looked at that population, like they, uh, certainly showed, um, more, uh, more more severity in terms of anxiety, depression, but lower rates of substance abuse. And we think of that in terms of like, what kind of supports do we have from those kids? And we've got, um, a very strong group at the high school, a very strong group at the, at Olson um, that are support and advocacy-based, and we've got a strong, um, you know, clergy, community in town that provide a lot of support outward and direct, and so I just think that, you know, things that are, are we think are helping to support that group and helping to mitigate some of the things that they otherwise could do that's on.
My last question, did you see alcohol rates higher for girls and boys?
Yep.
Really?
Not a huge difference, but it's, uh, the girls definitely out drank the boys, but the boys out smoked the girls.
Thank you.
I thank you for your report, um, and the balanced nature of it, that there are definite positives and definite, so positives. You know, my continuing, continuing concern, um, you know, the, is a challenge for the schools to you know, the pathways for communicating around some of these issues like sexual assault or suicide attempts, and, you know, frequently in my experience, you know, friends and other young people have the information that often the adults don't. And they have concerns about sharing that information because of mandated reporting and so forth, so, you know, I mean, I mean, this is, you know, we've got a large number of young people that have been sexually assaulted. You know, and that's a tough one, you know, people hang onto that for years and don't tell anyone. You know, and so, you know, how you get around, I mean, there's a very good and positive reasons for having reported reporters. You know, on the other hand, you know, it also, it becomes an impediment for people sharing things that are critically important for family members and community that know about. I don't know the answer to it, but it's a continuing challenge.
I have to think about the work that we all do is relational. If we can think about how do we create as many connections between the adults and the kids, it really is the most protective factor that we can have. Because if you have one kid who has maybe three or four safe adults, you increase the chances that they're gonna share something, or something's gonna get caught earlier than it would if, say, they're more isolated, they have less assets and less support around them. I always like to think that's teachers, coaches, piano teachers, uh, aunts, uncles, friends, like, you know, if we we think of it as putting as many safe, responsible adults around our kids and just saying hello, like what Catherine said is so true, and it's really, so, uh, it's, it's common sense, it's almost self-evident, like it's, it, uh, we, more of that we do, the safer and healthier our kids are.
Put the sad thing into Stephen's point, is that sometimes when a, a child goes to someone and reports something, unfortunately, that leaves there too, and becomes a bigger thing. So it's a really hard call, I mean, because you're mandated reporters and, and maybe a child wants to tell you something. But it's a great, where it will go from there, because they've been in that situation.
Yeah.
I think what's important too, and this is purely on a personal level for, for us, we, we lost someone to suicide last year, almost a year ago. And we all sat around and we continually said to ourselves, what did we miss? And where were the signs, and how did we not see what was going on? And that's the part that I don't understand, and I think if we educate parents more, sometimes we think everything's wonderful, and then it's not. So I, I guess the sign, I would love, and I would never want this to happen to anyone, but I guess there's, there has to be something that is there that we're missing, or maybe, maybe not, but it's, it's a struggle, because the blame is, is always there.
Hard to sort of sum up suicide prevention in, in a short sentence, but I mean, that's, what you're talking about really is, um, the what we talked about in QPR.
Yeah.
So that, that's looking at what are the signs and the symptoms, as well as how you wanna approach somebody, if you have any question at all. Um, and it's, uh, it's, it's a very difficult topic, especially for all of us that have lost people to suicide, which I have too. Something probably everybody in this room is probably got, um, a story, or something.
And I look now, and this, this was a college student, and I now, that my daughter's going off to college, I now sit there and it is so apparent that it, that college, there's something really wrong. Sit there and it is so apparent that it, that college, there's something really wrong. On that level at some point because. We don't know just how bad it is. And then you do the research and you're like, are you, are you kidding? That bad out there? So. I thank you. Really, I, I, I don't say, I mean that for everything that you do.
We really do appreciate it. We appreciate your time and your support and your collaboration, um. And if there's other questions or other things that we could do to help anybody out, we're always happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for being such a great partner and a great resource to, to us and to our students. Hey, I don't know, this is a sobering and somber, uh, report, but also some, some good news as well. Um, so it's a mixed bag, but it's always a wild report to get every other year. So, um. Uh, now we move on to, uh, Jen's item five, board members' comments. Does anybody have any comments that they wanted to make? Comments. I need to, I'll use this opportunity to report to the board, um, that last night the Board of Finance met. Um, and fortunately they voted unanimously, uh, to reduce our, uh, proposed budget. By two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, um, it's very disappointing, uh, to me personally, and it may come as, you know, a disappointment to some of you. As well, and I know Craig shares the disappointment that, you know. Not only did we come in with a very responsible budget under the difficult, uh, bu- budget cycle and, and some of the. Um, drivers behind our budget this year, we came in with a very responsible. Uh, three point four one percent proposal. Um, that was among the very lowest proposals in the state. Um, and we, we met with other leaders in the town and after understanding a little bit better what their goals were for. Um, you know, for tax impact and in a difficult tax in terms of valuation. Um. We were able to identify an additional two hundred thousand dollars that we, you know, felt that we could. Voluntarily sustain, um, as an additional cut from our, uh, from our budget. And, um, despite that, uh, somewhat gratuitously, in my opinion, the Board of Finance added an additional forty thousand dollars on top of that. We'll go back to the drawing board. Um, Craig is very good at this stuff and I'm sure we'll find a way to cut. Uh, that additional forty thousand dollars, um, but I want to thank the board for. Um, you know, kind of supporting our efforts to, um, to come in with a, with a low budget. And also to even come further voluntarily when we were asked to. Um, and, uh, you know, from here we, we go and find another forty thousand. I hope it doesn't have to come out of educational programming, um, but that remains to be seen. Procedurally from here, um, Dr. Cook will, will, um, work with, um, the administration and with Stacy. Um, and try and identify where, you know, we can, we can find those additional savings. He will report back to us and, um, we will vote on that, uh, new plan. Um, once Craig recommends it to us. Anything, um, anything else on that?
Yeah, I mean, as, uh, as Seth shared, we were, we were at the lowest and, uh, now we're near the lowest. This brings us in just about three percent, it's barely over, over three percent. Um, so. Um, we have a meeting scheduled for, we extended it with our other team to, to look at, you know. What, what are ideas for that? We'll, we'll go back. I know Gail is going to show us later, we're looking at April second for. Finance committee need to start that discussion. So. And typically when we've had kind of that new reduction, unless we can find. You know, something that, that changes like in health insurance, which I'm not expecting what, what whatsoever to, to change. Um, something real tangible like that, we, we've often times waited till the, um, budget is passed. Because we could have to look for, you know, if the budget does not pass in the town, you know, vote. Um, then we could have to even, even cut beyond the two forty. So, you know, that will. Continue to follow that and, and hopefully we, we come up with something that, um, doesn't. Doesn't really hurt students.
I, I know there was chatter about the two hundred thousand. What now, what now led to the additional forty?
I, personally, I can't speak for the, um, Board of Finance and, you know, watch the, um, meetings, um.
I believe, I believe they said it was, um, a one percent cut, not including, um, obligatory.
Salary discounts. Yeah. So the, the, the town, when they developed the town budget, they went through an exercise. Like after department heads had submitted their budget to reduce another one percent. Not including salaries, which I believe i- is what I understand. So some departments had to come up with, you know, a small amount of the departments had to come up with a. You know, a bigger amount and that, that led to a reduction in their budget. I think they calculated what a one percent not including salaries would mean to our.
Or other contractual.
So they, you know, they asked for our expertise to help find areas for cutting and we did. And then they, you know, did something otherwise. So.
Well, I mean, I, I don't think it's. I don't think it's something personal. It was, they did a one percent cut at town level. And so they're asking the Board of Ed to one, to do a one percent cut at the Board of Ed level.
Yeah, they, they, they found it, um, kind of interesting and they liked that Peggy went back. As the first select woman and asked each department to find an additional one percent they could cut. My understanding is not all the departments were able to find a full one percent. Um, but they sought to impose that on us like, hey. You know, if it worked for the town, maybe that would also work for the Board of Ed. Let's just ask them to cut two hundred and forty thousand. Because that's one percent other than the, those, um, um, two lines we mentioned. And, um, but the problem is it doesn't work the same way for the Board of Ed because we have, you know, certain responsibilities under. Education law and the statutes and all of that and our responsibilities to special ed students and everything. You know, you can't just say that, you know, if, if we have special ed carefully, you know, um, budgeted. Based on a rollover of a certain number of students, for example, that we know have special needs requirements. We can't say, well, cut up, cut one percent from that anyway. That's just one example, you know.
I know, but I don't think that's what they're saying. I think.
No, I, no, it's not. I don't think that they intended it that way, but that's the net effect. And it, you know, it was pointed out.
Yes. They also did mention, I watched the meeting because I didn't attend it. Um, but there was some talk about potentially covering costs because they know that the Board of Ed can't like. Save money for like, for instance, band uniforms, because we don't have that ability to just roll money over into the budget for next year. So they are aware of, you know, that our budget works differently than theirs. And it sounded like they were going to try to find a way to cover some of the costs that were sort of one-off costs that. That we have that if we cut it. Uh, and there are no guarantees, but I'm just saying that there was talk about that. So I don't think that they were being, you know, completely unfair. I'm not saying I agree or disagree with them. But they were implementing a one percent cut at town level. They're asking for a one percent cut. Obviously they can't tell us where to cut, so.
Well, and they also discussed, um, well, you know, Board of Ed and the district give back a couple hundred thousand dollars each year. Therefore, you know, they didn't call it fat in the budget, but their assumption was that we can find the money somewhere. What they didn't realize, you know, or they didn't articulate during their vote, because I was at the meeting. Um, but it was pointed out to them in the past by me personally, um, before this vote, that, um. The, um, the way we end up with money left over at the end of the year, because any budget is a planning tool, right? You don't have a crystal ball and know exactly what's going to happen, but what usually happens is we'll get an unexpected retirement or resignation. Because a teacher picks up and moves to a different state or to a different district. Um, or chases more money in a different district or something like that. Um, you know, if, if one special needs student, their family moves out of town. You know, um, if we have fewer snowstorms in a given year, little pockets like that. And because we manage tightly and really well throughout the year, we end up with a little bit of leftover money. And we have worked in the past to either reclaim some of that with cooperation or to just give it back to the states or to the town. So, um, you know, it's not like we build in fluff. We really don't. And you all know. I mean, I'm speaking to the choir on this, but preaching to the choir on this, but.
I think, you know, it, it would be something for us to be mindful of that when we build our budget. We always go on a base budget from the year before. And if we look at the budget that we passed this year and I voted for the budget, so clearly I support it. Um, but if you look at some of where the money was going to be spent, for instance, like furniture for the grid at the high school, that's a one-off cost, right? So if you look at the budget, of course, it's not that much, but if you look at where we would start then for the budget next year, it should be that much lower. Because that is a one-off cost, it shouldn't be built into an annual budget. And so, you know, I, I can see from that perspective that, you know, maybe we can reduce, you know.
So we don't have a mechanism.
But we don't have a way to save.
Exactly. So.
Then, but the town does. So. But you do have a way to save when it comes to, at the end of the year, I'm sorry to interrupt you. At the end of the year with reserves over to special education, we can do that.
But only because we created about ten years ago, we created a special fund.
Every Board of Ed has created that mechanism. So there, there are a lot that, that do. So, but I, look, I look at. Um, I could, I, I did not watch the, the meeting, but, um. You know, I think it's, I think at some point they're being fair. I mean, it, it's, we have to get back. I mean, Gail, what do you think? I look to you because you're on finance and I'm looking.
I'm just gonna say that we should wait for Dr. Book's integration, present options and then still great discussion.
I agree.
Uh, to talk about local finance, you know.
And another reason.
If I could just respond to a couple of things, so we're set, because I think it's important for, um, people might be watching and just for, for all of us as well. We do, as we go through as administration, we look at three to five year averages of all the different accounts. So whether it's. Snow removal or electricity or all those things, we do look at that as we, as we go through, we build our budget. Um, and, um, as, as Seth said, every year we have something that's positives that happen, we have negatives that happen. So we can't budget, you know, just for the, you know, just take off the positives for the, for the following year. And I will say, we, we do have things that come off that are, whether they're one year or two year, um, accounts. So th- this year is a perfect example. We had a, a curriculum, the teacher in charge of writing curriculum. That was one of the teachers reduced in this budget and that would have been the band uniform reduction a year from now. But if that, um, ultimately does stay in the, in the budget, you would see a ninety thousand dollar reduction. But then you'd probably see something else replacing that. Like every year there are, there are things, um, and I think that. Just about every district except the ones that you might read about in the paper, return money to the, to the town at the end of the, the year. We do have two accounts. We have, uh, um, a maintenance account that we're able to carry over. We have a special ed at three hundred and fifty thousand. Our mechanism to get the three hundred and fifty thousand, we do have to go back to the, the council. So we try to avoid that and make, you know, um. Line item transfers within if we can handle it ourselves, because we want to keep that three hundred and fifty thousand. That really does represent maybe one or two students. You know, coming in, they went to the district that could be outplaced or two new outplacements. So, uh, we always have to be cognizant of that. There is some proposals for new language that would give us more flexibility over that, that money going forward. But I will say, and the town does not land on zero each year. They land on, you know, a, a positive number. And so then they're able to put that into the, the fund balance. We land on a, a positive number. I'm always going to try to do that. Stacy's always going to try and do that. So that we can, we can do that. We go through that exercise, but we still get bills in July. That we don't know how much they're going to be, you know, in June thirtieth, when we have to extend that money. So we follow those accounting principles and. You know, like I said, like I said before, you know, we're always going to have some positive variance at the end of the year, hopefully. You know, if we don't, then, you know, we're going to have to dip into one of those two accounts to cover that.
And if we don't, there's a, a budget shortfall, Board of Ed members are personally liable for it. So, you know. Be careful to not cut too close to the quick.
Kudos to Stacy.
Yes, yeah, no.
I've watched over many years the process. In other districts of Board of Finance Training Boards of Education. And the way they do that is. Every year. The Board of Education puts together what they think is a responsible budget and then it gets cut. And before very long, after several years, the Board of Education learns that this is how the game is played. And so the next time they make a budget, it isn't quite as responsible. And there is fluff because they anticipate the way to protect our programs is to build something in to protect our programs. You know, uh, you know, I've been gratified, you know. I'm a new member on the Board of Education. You know, I've been gratified to look at how this board has approached budget. And how responsible it is, and how, you know, as you stated, you know, we have the smallest increase of probably any. Board anywhere. Um, you know, so it is, it's disheartening, but I look at that dynamic and I go, you know. Is this a training exercise? Just by two cents.
So my guess, the two forty thousand, you said we're about a three percent increase, but. Our contract, contractual obligations are like at two point seven, aren't they?
Correct. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you all for listening and engaging in that discussion. You know, I think it's, uh, important because that's one of our main functions as a board is to, um. Maintain and prepare and maintain a vote on the budget. So thank you. Any other board member comments? No. Okay. Any audience response to information presented? Okay. Uh, is there anyone on my, no, okay, thanks. All right, uh, let's move on to board committees and liaison updates, curriculum and student development. Steve?
We have not met since the last meeting.
Okay, um, facilities committee, Emily.
No report.
Okay. Finance committee, Galen, uh, upcoming. Okay. Personnel committee, Marie.
We had not met before.
Okay. And policy committee, I will, I know that there's.
So we did meet tonight, um, and I'm looking at the moment. As we discussed mainly, um, nine thousand and five thousand series, our goal. So when I met, our goal is to power through the nine thousand series before the end of the year and also, um. Hopefully the five thousand series hitting some of the fourth oven series and clean it all up. So, um, making some headway, had a lot of discussions today, some, some things will come forward to the board, so we'll not. So we'll go back to be reworked. Um, but on our agenda this evening. We have policies for a second read for recession and the five thousand series and a couple of the nine thousand series. And I'll just remind you that the nine thousand series require a two thirds vote with the board. And we have policies up for a second read to review, five thousand and again, nine thousand series that require two thirds. You should have policy summary with notes from shipment and given in your packet. And if you have any questions regarding it, I'll try to answer.
Any questions, Lauren or Diane? Thank you. Um, learn liaison.
Yes, we met, um, uh, the basic thing or the most important thing is superintendent. Perspective and it was superintendent, Stonington Public Schools, Mary Ann Bobber. That was the thing. It was a short name.
Thank you. All right, um, now we have an item on the agenda that was asked to be added, um, to request by three board members. To add a discussion, um, regarding demand zero and adding that to the future board agenda. So, um, I'd like to open that discussion. Um, I, I think, uh, we kind of spoke a little bit at, not the last meeting, but the previous meeting. Um, you know, I, my feelings are, you know, I think it would be great. I think maybe. You know, we can talk about having another, um, evening program. One of the things that I have a big concern about was covered in the presentation from Madison and Family Services tonight. Is the increase in use of. And Family Services tonight is the increase in use of um. Uh, cannabis derivatives and especially the in- insane potency. Of the modern cannabis products. And I think that that can serve some, in some ways, as a gateway um, to some of the opioids, and so I think.
The, the cannabis can be laced.
Yeah, of course.
So.
So I think it might be good to have a dual program.
I mean, I can, I can actually read a little statement.
Yeah.
Go ahead, you read your statement first, and then I have something to say.
Um, from Demand Zero. So actually, what Demand Zero would do is just take all this and just kick it up a little bit. And while they're working there, she's working with them and also with uh, our chief drunk. So the police department here in Madison works with Demand Zero. So what I was thinking, I think, is that she could come even come with maybe Chief Drunk. Or one of the officers that they deal with in New Haven and just present her what she. What she's, what this whole group, Demand Zero, I'm a part of it too, is all about. And just to get a sense, so everyone can get a sense of it. I mean, the, the movie I think is fantastic, I mean. I love the movie, and I, I think that, I hope that a lot of kids watch the movie. But the broader spectrum is that this affects so many kids everywhere, you know, in the whole state. She, they've done statewide programs, so if we could combine all this and just. Have some sort of a presentation either in the schools or at least have her come here to, to talk to us. And then see where we want to go with it from there.
So my statement is just, I, I support anything that's going to bring awareness and, you know, reduce usage. But my, I guess my feeling on this is, um, like, where are we going with this? Because typically, you know, as a board, we, we do certain things, we do budget, we do policy, we do curriculum. Um, but when it comes to presentations within, within the schools, we leave that to the administration. And we know that we have built into our curriculums, et cetera, some other similar programs. And I don't think that we should always use the same stuff all the time, because, you know, it gets lost, it loses its impact. But I think that maybe um, it would be better to have Demand Zero meet directly with, like, TJ. And work with him to say, here's our presentation, we would like to bring this into the high school. And work with him for him to decide the programming within his own school. And the same with Paulson, older. But wasn't that for the whole community, if they just used Paulson?
It was, but it was at the right school.
Right, but it was a, it was open to the whole community. I'm talking about the. A school building specific program, but I don't feel like. Unless there, um, like what happened before was there was, I forget what it was now, it's off. I'm forgetting, but anyway, getting one, um. There was something that was done at the high school, and then they came to the board and presented to us and said. This is what we're doing at the high school, and we all loved it, yada, yada. But what you're suggesting is that they come to us and then we tell the high school administer this. And that's, that's the precedent that I don't like.
Well, I don't think that we're gonna tell them to do it. I'm just saying that if they, if, if they came here and showed the presentation to people. Maybe we could influence, because I, I don't think TJ wants to do it. I've talked to him.
You talked to him as.
As, he doesn't. I mean, I just.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that TJ had some. Solid reasoning behind why he felt it might not be appropriate to show as part of the school curriculum. Or a program at the school, but then there was a compromise.
It's a modified version.
Okay, there was compromise to show it not as part of the school program, but at Paulson.
It is in our grade. After Cook, can you speak to this?
Yeah, and I might call on Gil in terms of the, the curriculum piece, but I, I, I think I'm just trying to define what the um. Best way to work with the request is, and so, I mean, my thought committed to tonight would be to. Offer another Paulson night event where we commute, we, we try and bring the community into that. So that would get a wider audience rather than, i- and, and if we did something short here, that would be something different, but I think. Uh, yeah, I think more, I think we get more attendance at that and type of event. Um, there was a statewide event, unfortunately, it exams because of our trimester schedule.
And that was excellent.
Right.
Well, that's what I was saying, if, if they could work directly with TJ, because he knows the high school schedule. So like, if the community that you had, the, the percentage of community that we, that they got at Paulson last time. They kind of left out a lot of the high school because it was during the exams, et cetera, whatever.
No, no, this, that was totally different.
There was one during the day for students that hit the um, and, but we communicated with Lisa about that, she understood. Um.
I just think it's such.
Couldn't we just, couldn't we partner up with Madison Youth and Family? With Demand Zero, since their, so their report tonight was amazing. And they're admitting that there's clear issues THC is, is at ninety percent with butane. I'm, don't know any of this, I've learned it tonight. Um, but if, if that is so concentrated and kids are using. And buying off of a, a street drug. And it's laced with exactly what Demand Zero is saying, this is the fentanyl. Then I think it would just make perfect sense for, if Madison Youth and Family is in our school. Then for those two to connect and somehow. Be able to kind of endorse it.
That's what I was, I, I'm exactly, like your point exactly. I was thinking have a dual program, like at Paulson in the evening.
Absolutely.
And have both Demand Zero and Madison Youth and Family Services cover those two related topics.
Yeah.
And I think it will spark better conversation, because the parents and students will attend together.
Yes, I agree completely, and I.
Family Services will be a draw.
Yeah.
Even, I mean, because this is a great, but it's not, you know.
I agree, no, I, I agree, and I'm feeling, and I, and I think it's something that, that the kids, and. Again, I go back to, to my daughter, my youngest leaving, and I'm, you know, there. Some of these kids, I'll admit it, she's naive when it comes to a lot of this. And I think to see something like this and understand it, she may not retain it. But at least she'll have seen it, and I think that, I think that Madison Youth would be, um. Effective to this.
Yeah, well, maybe Mary Ann, you could bring it to them.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure if Lisa has, but I will find out.
I can.
I was thinking that tonight, too.
I can follow up as well. We'll make sure, we'll make sure we communicate and follow up, and Gil, in terms of that.
I just didn't know if you guys wanted to see it, you know, listen to her. I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, you know, the board actually adopted our health units last year, so. Um, those are posted up in the website, and also our social emotional units were adopted last year. And in the health units, the film is a resource and, and some of our lessons in the high school. So it is listed as a resource and is there, and it is a, um. Mary Ann found that a version that didn't have any language in it, um, so we felt comfortable, um. Being able to include that as a resource. But also, you know, just in general, um, lots of the topics, I was, I was scrolling through the website. As Scott was presenting, I heard the presentation once before. And just so many of the topics and the concerns are consistently hit in our curriculum. Um, so I could look up word after word after word. Um, you can see that Madison Youth and Family Services is listed as supports. Uh, QPR training happening in seventh grade and in ninth grade directly connected to them. And very unique, you know, I think for our community. I walked out with um, Scott saying, you know, I, I never seen anything like this in any other community, so it is a strong partnership. And I, um, I do think that we work in tandem when something comes up that's new or different. Um, you know, Scott will reach out to me and say, this is what we're hearing, and we'll jump on it and find a way to include it. Um, I did want to add that, that was kind of one of the questions that you asked earlier.
I'm just concerned about the process. We have one employee. Dr. Cook, so, and we have a curriculum committee. And we have processes for looking at what we do within our schools. I don't see it as the board's job to pick programs. Promote them, speak directly to school administrators, and advancing those. You know, on the other hand, we could have a presentation, have concerns, and talk to our superintendent saying. I think we need to do more, or I think we need to do things in this direction. And maybe we, you know, you and your curriculum person can look at those. But, you know, I think we need to stay in our lane.
But we did do that. We did speak with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. Who sent to speak to the.
They sent you to talk to the principal?
I mean, I think it's good for the board to say, this is what we're interested in, we want to see more programming like this, you know, um.
That's why it was brought up.
Yeah, and I think, you know. Every time you can present it a different way, so that it's new, you know, maybe it'll stay for another forty-eight hours in their head.
Yeah.
But I also think to, to Steve's point is that based on the information and the assessment that was done in October. As a board, we would be remiss if we didn't think that we had to do more, because we do. There's a problem.
It's a big problem.
There, there's, and it's not just drugs, it's suicide, it's drinking and driving. It's drugs, it's, I mean, she spent ten minutes on THC alone. So I think as, as, I agree that we shouldn't dictate policy with programs. But I think that if we can make the connection with Madison Youth and this particular program, it's a win-win.
Do, great, and Gil, do you feel that you have enough direction from this discussion to kind of?
Yeah, like, like I said, I feel much uh, more comfortable if we're looking at a, a community event, because I think these are community issues. You know, I don't think these are all things that are responsible, responsibility, they all are responsible responsibility of the district. We cannot do them alone. Um, you know, I think there's a lot of those things in there in that report, the report that, that, that point to anxiety, that point to a lot of other things. And I think some of those pressures are coming from the homes as well. I mean, there, there's, there are some policy decisions that would not be very popular, I think, in the community, that we could, we could go down those paths. Limiting the number of AP courses that the students can take, you know, doing away with all class rate, doing away with, you know, other things. And so, I mean, I think those, that's a bigger discussion, I think we could get into at some point. But I, I, I think in terms of tonight's agenda item, I, I like the outcome of this, I think that that's a um, a good piece. We do do so much during the day, I think we have a, a good balance. We do have, we don't talk about it enough, but we have our multi-tier system of supports as well for social motion. So we do have, you know, with the social workers and the school counseling that the board has supported adding. Um, the curriculum pieces and the health curriculum that the board has approved. So we do, you know, do a lot of those, those things, but it's a community, you know, issue, and I think we have to do it. And I, I agree with everybody who's, who's pointed out, just having, you know, Joel or myself, you know, you see these numbers, it's, it's um.
Horrifying?
It's horrifying, it really is, yes.
We're here to fight for the kids. You know, it's, it'd be great if we could get that in before graduation.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Well, yeah, that's a tight, tight schedule.
Well, thank you for raising it, it's an, an important issue. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Well, kind of right along with what was going on.
Yeah, that was a good, it's a, a happy coincidence that it happened tonight, so, great. All right, um, so, I mean, I've got a potential motion to discuss adding. Demand Zero to a future board agenda, but I don't know that we need to do that, because I think we've.
I guess maybe we can wait and, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, all right, so let's, let's.
Just give us a report the next meeting, what's going on, where we are with it.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll just report on it.
All right, all right, so, um. Action item number nine, um, I need a motion to adopt the K twelve world language units. So move.
Second.
Right, Stephen seconded by Diane. Thank you. All right, um, any discussion on those? Discussion on this motion, seeing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Passes eight, nothing. Thank you. Uh, action item ten, I need a motion to rescind the following policies. Fifty-one hundred point nine point six, maintenance and development of athletic programs. Fifty-one ten point three point one, police in schools. Fifty-one forty-two point four, school resource officer. Fifty-one twenty point nine point five, automobile use and parking. Fifty-one forty, school and community service. Fifty-one eighty point two, research. Ninety-four seventy, school attorney slash legal services, and ninety-four eighty consultants to the board.
So, thank you.
So by Diane, seconded by Maureen. Any discussion on rescinding those? Seeing none, all in favor, aye.
I'm all opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, nothing, thank you.
Action item eleven, I need a motion to approve the following policies. Fifty-fifty student privacy, ninety-five thirty executive sessions slash open meetings. Ninety-eight twenty point one, board member conferences, conventions and workshops. Ninety-eight forty, board member compensation and expenses. By Diane, seconded by Maureen. Any discussion on approving those policies? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries eight, nothing, thank you. Um, action item twelve, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March fifth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Um, I have the motion.
So.
By Emily. Seconded by Diane, thank you. Any discussion about the minutes from the March fifth meeting? No, okay, um, all in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Um, staying, I wasn't there, I knew after I was staying, but I didn't know what happened, so. So that's uh, seven, zero, one. Okay. All right, uh, item number thirteen, and future agenda items, requests for future agenda items. Seeing none, um, meetings and dates of importance are attached. Um, in your packet, uh, and I need a motion to adjourn. Again, seconded by Emily. That would be at nine. At twenty-four P M, uh, the discussion on adjournment, all in favor, aye. Opposed, nay. Any extensions? Thank you, thank you.